Think of a good one. Just trying to think of something inventive. Hey, Charles?
Oh.
Happy July. All right, so now it's just David and Joaquin. Come on, finance folks. We have a lot to go through tonight, but we'll try to make it as quick as possible. Sequenced it slightly differently than it is on the public agenda, but we'll talk about that when we vote to update the agenda. I'm reaching out to David and Joaquin both.
Joaquin's running, he's trying to get the webinar link, Gabrielle, and we sent it to him, so that was his delay. He tried earlier, but he couldn't find it.
Okay, and David is also asking.
There he is.
Morning.
Hello.
Good morning, Joaquin.
Do I need to send the, David's texting? Can we send him? Did he get a invite?
Michael will send him the invite again.
Okay, I'm gonna let him know.
There he is.
Say good morning, you want another continent?
I don't know why I don't have the link in my calendar invite.
No, it's old.
It's not, so this is, I think for us to be in the meeting as panelists who can see each other and be part of the general sharing, I think, I don't know if the sharing has anything to do with it, but we have to be panelists, and so that invite came, I think, last week from Michael. It's, I think we can't put it in the calendar invite. Is that the case?
Michael, can you share with, sorry, can you share with Delly Ness, the lady she having a hard time logging in?
Oh, my gosh, Delly Ness, of course.
I just feel like I would have had it in the calendar if it had been sent. It doesn't matter, I'm here now.
No, I mean, I am curious about if there's any way for us to include the calendar. I think that's really the easiest way for everybody to access it. I don't know if that limits, if that kind of contradicts any sort of privacy type of, like, arrangements that we have to make.
This particular webinar is structured so that we can talk to one another as panelists.
Right.
We can also have public persons watching. And that's why this webinar invite is different from what you would normally do and just send a link. Sending a link is what we usually do for most of our meetings, as you all are aware. But in this particular case, for the webinar purposes, we send invites. What we'll do next time is, in the morning or in the afternoon, send you a reminder of where that invite can be located.
That is helpful. Or is it the same, can everybody use the same panel invite, or are they individual?
We think they're all individual. We've done this before for the, for the family meetings, and it's always an individual link, so. I was trying to do something differently earlier, to try to send myself the link to test it, to see if it would work for everyone, and it doesn't. So, must be something in the science of the webinar that keeps you from doing it the easy way.
Okay. Hey, Delly Ness.
There we are.
There we go, I got it now.
Okay.
Sorry, everyone.
That's okay.
Difficult time logging in.
Perhaps in the 10th year of this pandemic, we will all remember to unmute and mute and access links and all of that. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to our July meeting, which is also our annual meeting. Roberto, is there anything you want to start off with before I get going?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're beginning our meeting. We'd like to welcome members of the public. We have one of our parents online. And this is our regular monthly board meeting, and Gabrielle Mosquera is our chairperson. Thank you, Gabrielle.
Thank you. Welcome to our members and to our parent attendee. Wonderful, okay. I know that we, I sent everybody the, the pre-reads, including the agenda. I mean, it could start to go through. The, the first item's going to be just routine business, and I'm going to start with voting to pass the agenda, but I'm going to go through the content of it in a different order than the, the notice that was posted, just to be able to consolidate the votes that we have to make under various, like, committee headings, largely, mostly under the committee headings and also just components like the board development, because a lot of what we're going to be voting on tonight is related to board development. So, with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to vote on, to adopt tonight's agenda with the slight edit that the order of the, although the same content appears, the order will vary slightly from what is posted on our website. Is there a second?
My second.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you all. Okay, next item under routine business is the approval of the June minutes. Does anybody have any edits to the meeting minutes from June? Check in.
Just for clarity, are guests the same as members of the public?
Typically, our guests would include those who were included as panelists, such as Bob, Kio, because we want them to be able to weigh in throughout the meeting.
Perfect. I'm just checking, since we did have members of the public, I'm not sure if those got mentioned in the agenda or needed to have been mentioned.
I believe they're mentioned at the end of the minutes when we do have comments.
Okay, only if there are comments. Okay, great.
Yes. Yeah. No, we are good. All right, so any, any other questions about the June minutes or edits? All right, I make a motion to approve the June 16 meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, the meeting minutes are adopted. All right, now let's go into new business, starting with the executive director report.
Thank you, Gabrielle. My report's gonna be brief because of the density of our agenda, but everybody was sent board bullets, as we normally do. Does anyone have any questions regarding the bullets that were sent in advance to the board?
And one quick caveat that might be worth including here, Roberto, is that we're going to go over the reopening plan that was outlined in the bullets as a separate item, so if you have questions about that, just hold on to that until we get there.
Great, that's right. Good. I don't think I'm hearing or seeing any hands, so thank you. The big news for us as a team is that we have been able to achieve at long last the loan approval and the actual numbers and, and technical questions around the loan will be asked and presented during the finance committee. However, it was such a mammoth job, and thanking directly to Joaquin and to David for, for their diligence and to Gabrielle for her oversight and to other persons on the friends of or in addition to our attorney. Great delays happening with our landlord of the building, but after all is said and done, that loan for the purpose of renovation of the fourth floor is now completed and first draw of the funds have been done in our, in our, in our accounts of friends of, you'll get more detail on the technicality of that, as I said, later. The good news that will warm our hearts is that, as part of our process for this loan, we are obliged to roster development, to bring in an inspector each time to approve the, the work that has been done to that point in order for us to get further draws to, to, to make this renovation complete. And so the good news, I just spoke with our general contractor not, I'm an hour ago, and the first inspection has been completed and the banking inspector came and went with no notes and no, no issues. So that's, that's great news for us, and we're really happy about that. I'm gonna move into the construction update unless there's any questions about what I've just said on the banking inspection. Okay. Construction update, as you know, the fourth floor has been underwork for the last month. I've never seen a construction project move this rapidly with such precision and skill. The teams that have been assembled are more than professional. They've been able to literally take a, a space upstairs and, and carve out eight classrooms, an art room, a music room, and the, the walls are in, the plumbing is in, plumbing inspection's being done tomorrow. We have some additional major structural drilling that's being done for that plumbing. It's being completed now. Plumbing inspector's gonna be done tomorrow. We're more than, we're more than, I, I just, I'm just overwhelmed how quickly, and you know, knock on wood, but we're gonna make our, we're gonna make our deadline and be, and be able to get our kits in. The, the construction itself is pretty straightforward. The ceilings are much higher in this space. And I think that there's gonna be a feeling of airiness, there's gonna be a feeling of a lot of room, there's gonna be more bathrooms, that's great. So, all in all, we're on a very good track. We have our project management team, EBI, handling a lot of the paperwork and ensuring that accountabilities are checked, that work that's being done and that is being invoiced is properly, properly accounted for, and I can't think of anything that, well, I shouldn't, again, jinx it, but as I said, everything should, is, is looking good for August. I'm saying August 15th, that would be a great birthday gift. Any questions? Gabrielle, that's all I have to say.
That's very exciting. I'm really glad to hear how different, how differently this process is going from this time last year and you know, what a difference a year makes, so that's great. All right.
And the biggest, the biggest work we have is the work of, of really anticipating the opening in August, so if we can get onto the meeting and get our reports, that, well, we'll be able to have a more thorough discussion on what the academic program is in addition to all the operational issues that we're addressing.
Yep, great. Bless you. Let's move into the, the reopening plan.
So, reopening, we are, we've been planning for a few months now what our reopening plan will look like, and we've been waiting on guidance from NICE Ed to determine which path we've had, multiple scenarios that we've been planning for. Given the guidance that we received last week, we are excited that we get to move forward with the scenario Plan A that we've been wanting to move forward with, which, as Roberto mentioned, we have additional space that's being built out that would have housed us until third grade, so we had extra classrooms this coming year. Space that would not have been otherwise utilized as a classroom. And so what that allows us to do is to divide classrooms into smaller sizes and still be able to fit all of our students within the school and keep a Monday through Friday schedule. So in this scenario, each classroom has about 12 to 14 students in each classroom, 30 square feet per student, except the ICT classrooms. The ICT classrooms will stay 18 to 20 students, but they are being moved to the larger spaces in the building, so our current cafeteria spaces, our large art room, which provides about 30 to 40 square feet per student. What we have to adjust due to this plan is more on the staffing end. So we are assigning some of our associate teachers to take on small classrooms, and we are also moving some of our specialists, like our ELA specialists, to be leading a classroom as well. Again, these will be classrooms of sizes of 12 to 14 students. One of the other changes that would happen in this scenario is that we cut our school day a little bit shorter, so about an hour. Generally, our kids dismiss at 3:45. In this scenario, they're dismissing between 2:30 to 2:45 in order to then have prep time for our teachers. So our teachers would be able to have their lunch within the day, but in order with our, with the number of specialists that we have and preps that we need to provide, the only way we can resolve for that is going until 2:30 and then including that additional time as prep time for our teachers, which is in many ways also a benefit for them because they get to have common prep time, which was one of the big pieces of feedback that we got from our teachers that they wanted to be able to have this year. Yeah, so we're making other adjustments, including lunch in the classroom, recess possibly in the classroom, and we're thinking through how specials, art, music, and PE will happen, but we're thinking that our large cafeteria space that was supposed to be our cafeteria, since lunch is now happening in the classroom, we can possibly have PE in there, which is a very large space, and still at here at six feet apart with the small groups of students that we will have. Michael, Roberto, do you want to add anything onto that first slide?
I just want to add one note, which is that we really wrestled with this idea of shortening the school day even temporarily. We take really seriously our extended school day, and that's part of our model. But logistically, the way schools work is special subjects teachers cover classroom teachers so that they can have prep time for the next day and so that they can have lunch. And when you almost double the number of classes to cover without doubling your specials teachers, you just, something has to give. So when it comes down to it, we'd rather do almost a full day every day than, than have every other day or everyone at home. So that's not something we take lightly. It's, it's, I wince every time I see it. But it still would put us as, I think, one of relatively few schools in the city that would actually be able to have instruction in the building every day.
One intended benefit, and it's been mentioned already, is that we're actually providing 30 square feet per student versus the requirement of 20. That's gonna create classrooms of about 12 children in each class, which is pretty nice for teachers, and I see Delly Ness smiling. And it really is a huge benefit for children, especially for children that need extra special attention. So we're real happy about that as well, as a development of, of this particular plan.
I can speak to the next one. I know we do need to keep moving, and hopefully everyone's had a chance to read these ahead of time, but we not only have 147 pages of guidance from the state ed department, we've also got a lengthy document from the state health department. And so all of, all of that guidance will be reflected in what we do in the building. But the way our hallways look will be different. Our, our cleaning schedule will be very. And as we've talked about before, be using masks in certain situations.
Do you mind muting, please?
So, can certainly answer specific questions about that, but pulling out all the stops essentially when it comes to safety, sanitizing, that's to say nothing of contact tracing, logging, who is where, isolation and quarantine protocols in case someone does show up sick. And so this is, all of this had been planned before, and this will be happening regardless of the other details. Delly Ness, do you want to take this one? Or I can?
So, no, sorry. So obviously, we, we have to have a sort of distance learning model for different scenarios that can occur throughout the year, whether that means another surge happens and schools need to close down again, or if we have many staff members out and for operational reasons need to close down. And so we're thinking through what that remote learning approach would be in a situation like this. One of the technology pieces that we already have and we're looking to expand the usage of is our Swivel cameras. And those cameras allow for video recording of teachers live and to be able to stream that live via Zoom and other platforms. So that's something that we're looking into, and we're also, in terms of the technology needs, we've ordered Chromebooks for every child in our school, so every child will have a Chromebook in, in case that they need to go home and they need to take their Chromebooks with them. And we've been doing just inventory and speaking to our families around who in our community may have needs for technology, for internet, assessing that as we did when we had to switch over to remote learning. We're doing that as well with our new incoming families as we get them registered. So, you, you want to take that, Michael?
Thanks. This section was not in your bullets because we didn't know exactly what the guidance was going to say. The guidance came in, I think, Thursday night. But essentially, as you see here, some students who are, have medical-related reasons because of their own condition or because of someone in their household or because they have special needs and can't reliably practice social distancing may need to be provided with a remote learning alternative. And so while we weren't sure the size of this, it's, it's been communicated and clarified for, for us and all the schools in New York that there is this category of families and schools and districts have to be prepared to provide remote learning. So, we're in the middle of an initial survey of families. We will be going out next week with more of this kind of detailed information and then asking for families to let us know by a deadline, likely next Friday, about, you know, if they believe that, that they will require this option. It is educationally not the ideal option, but sometimes it's necessary, and of course, you know, we want to be sensitive to, to families' decisions. So we'll be trying to find that balance, communicating how much we would like to have everyone in person if possible, but also being responsive with families that, that have something else going on, and we already know that, that some of our families do. So those specifics and what that means for our school will vary a little bit depending on what we figure out is the size of that group. It's a handful of families versus if it's a whole class worth of kids at every grade level, you can imagine different combinations of, of live streaming, asynchronous, you know, online exercises and different things like that. But, you know, I know our instructional team, and I know that we'll be coming up with a, a strong plan to serve all, all of the kids. How did I do, Delly Ness? Is that okay?
Yep, that's, that's, you, you summed it up really well. Really, it's really important for us to get that data from families so that we have an idea as to what percentage of our families may be opting into this full remote option in order for us to then make the best instructional decisions, staffing decisions, and really finalize our plan. So that, we're hoping by the end of this week, we have that data, and we're pushing really hard for all of our families to complete that survey so that then we can start working on finalizing what this remote learning option would look like for families and students.
I have a question. Is there any reason why you're not asking fam, I may, I may have misheard this, but are you giving families a couple of days to decide, or are you asking them, hey, this is the scenario, yes or no, remote or live?
Yeah, so two things. First, let me just start. The, we've had webinars already with our incoming families, and we've been meeting with families regularly of those new parents that are coming in. But part of the survey that was released earlier this week asks for additional input about this, and so it's a staged rollout of communication to families. But Michael, you want to add some more detail to that?
Yeah, so next week is the actual decision point. So as families get these more details about what you're seeing and even more about what this would mean for you and expectations for time, for adult supervision, for, you know, just so you can really imagine each scenario, we'll lay that out for them and then ask them to inform us within a week of which, which scenario they're gonna follow, and if they want the remote learning option, they need to let us know so we can plan for it. That doesn't mean that medical situations don't emerge or change and we don't have to adjust, but we need to plan, so.
I'm gonna ask a question I've already asked in check-ins, but might be worthwhile for the board as a whole to hear the answers to, which is that within your sort of informal surveying so far of the families and our teachers, has there been any pushback to the reopening plan?
I wouldn't say pushback. Our teachers certainly have some concerns. We actually have a, we've asked for their input. We've also talked about their comments, and we have an all-staff meeting later this week. But they're, they're also clear that they're going to be in whichever road we go down. They're, they're, they're keeping their jobs and coming to work. Families, we're still gathering the data. There's, it is, it is not a consensus view that being back every day is, is something that, that everyone's enthusiastic about. Interestingly, our returning families are a little bit more ambivalent so far than our, than our incoming families who are, are more positive about the daily scenario. But it's hard to say before we communicate all of the details, and one thing I'm mindful of is that, you know, we keep describing to you guys what the fourth floor is like, but if you've been a LEAP family, you've never experienced that, so you know, we, we need to do our job to communicate what this will look like, what classrooms will look like, how much space will be in place, the safety protocols. It's, it's a nervous time for a lot of people. We also, though, have heard personally from a lot of families that are very excited to be back in the school and that are just kind of raring to go. So, you know, I think we're probably a, maybe a microcosm of New York City in that way. But as we keep, as we get in this more data on our survey and then next week, our actual commitments, you know, we'll, we'll have a more fine-grained sense of it.
Yeah, and the summer, the summer surveys that parents are getting and are trying to fill out, you know, the data's trickling in, and our decisions are really gonna be made based on what we actually hear. I know that with the registration, what we're calling a registration form or a commitment form will really give us more concrete numbers as to where the, the vulnerabilities are among our families and, and which ones would opt in for this program.
So I have a suggestion, perhaps. Are, are you allowing parents to drop by to sort of see the space? If so, perhaps you just want to work on like the second or third floor, just taking one of the rooms and putting little masking tapes and sort of establish it already, so you've got that density of, I believe it was, what, 30 feet, 30 square feet around each student? Or 20 students per class, whatever, and then that might give parents visually a better understanding of what the spacing is throughout the school. If you're not able to have people, parents drop by to look at it visually, you might consider doing some kind of photograph or some type of, not a photograph, but also like a virtual tour, perhaps. That might ease. And what you might do is put like some stuffed animals that proxy as, as little kids, and then they can get a sense of what that looks like.
Yeah, Michael and Maida are handling the operation. That's a great idea, and, and we are actually dressing up one of our classrooms to do just that. We have been getting families, and we've been giving them tours of the building, limiting to the second and third floor, but to Michael's point, nobody has seen the fourth floor. And so we're also gonna create a series of, another, another webinar, video, so that we can be more expressive about how we're gonna keep everyone's child, child safe in the space. But thank you, those are great ideas, and we will map it out accordingly. We're also creating in our kinder and first grade acrylic screens, so I think folks need to see those as well. We're talking to one of our contractors upstairs to build those for us for kinder and first grade. I hope to get those fairly quickly.
Thank you, Joaquin.
Are there any other questions or comments about the reopening plan? Okay, so I think that the way uh we need to, what we need to do now is essentially take a vote to um, to delegate the the plan preparation and adoption. Well, let well, let's go through the language here. Thank you.
All right.
No, it's okay, because the, because uh there is so much guidance for the leadership team to go through. Uh, like hundreds of pages at this point, uh, but they do need to submit it by the end of the month and we don't want to call another additional special meeting to vote on the exact end plan. We need to uh vote to authorize the the team essentially to adopt the plan in accordance with all of the safety regulations that they've been given. So um, if we just want to take a quick look at the slide with this language, um, I will defer to Joaquin and David as the resident attorneys to see if they need, have any changes to the way it's phrased.
I'm sorry, I would add only after um the state guidance, put a comma, and whatever modifications and changes that might be required to these plans from time to time. I think we were under the misimpression that agencies under know what they're actually doing and 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 moreover, that the situation isn't fluid. It's very fluid. And so you may have to pivot, modify, change. So you probably, I would add, have something about a couple of scenario plans ready.
The other thing I would, is it worth adding or is it implicit that there's medical guidance within the state guidance? I don't know if it's worth it saying law, comma, state, comma, medical guidance.
Yeah, I was going to mention that too, Melissa. I I I think that one of the things here is that we want to set a floor of language. So so these plans should at a minimum meet the requirements of local, state, federal regulation um, at a minimum. And then, you know, other guidance as maybe they see fit or more. But ultimately, this resolution really revolves around how comfortable everybody on this panel feels about safely reopening to full, you know, to that capacity in the fall and putting it in that. But I but I think we've we've heard what, why there's good reason to do that.
I probably would also add that you will that in this resolution, you will continue to keep the board apprised as to any changes or modifications. Um, we have like two or three, two months left, right? So a lot can happen in two months. It's just good to, you know, have all that. But I think it's a good basic resolution, but I would a agree with Melissa and David. Add some of that elastic language, add some of that that kind of flexible language and make sure that the board is is continually apprised in the months to come.
Thank you. Yeah, I just on the before we get to the the language, I think uh substantively, you know, how this rolls out, we submit this plan by the thirty-first. We post it as is required so that all of our stakeholders can download it and see it and understand it. And we continue to work closely with you all, keep you guys posted as the details get finalized. Same thing with parents, same thing with uh with other partners and stakeholders.
I would make sure whatever you do post to parents have some kind of disclaimer language that, you know, this is an act of collaboration, you know, obviously with your board, but also has to reflect guidelines as they are in flux and also uh reflecting where the pandemic is. I mean, it's important that people understand this is all a moving target.
Well, and and to that point, among the requirements for us are the types of contingency plans that we've described. So we must be ready for individuals who need remote. We must be ready for another resurgence, all those different scenarios. So um, it might be like writing another charter. Should be fun. But just to recap, what I what I believe I've captured here is a resolution along these lines, but adding, you know, if additional modifications as may be needed, adding a mention of law, state and medical guidance, uh, adding that all of this is at a minimum and also adding, you know, and to continue to keep the board apprised at and in between its upcoming meetings, something like that. Yeah.
Again, I just, uh, it's about having the flexibility you need to do what you think makes sense, even if that's not exactly what the the bare bones of the law are.
I would also suggest that the board stand ready to have additional meetings as you might in the next coming two or three months, given that so much is changing. Um, things probably won't level out till like around November, December. Just be prepared that that might have to occur.
Okay.
Good job.
Any other additions or edits? Okay, so I'm going to give this a go, trying to remember all of the language that we just mentioned. So I move to authorize the executive director and staff to prepare, communicate and submit a reopening plan, including at minimum safety protocols, full daily instruction with social distancing, remote instructions for s- remote instruction for students who require it, contingency plans for whole school remote instruction, and additional steps as required by law and state medical guidance. These plans will be reported on in an ongoing basis to the board and will be adjusted as needed.
You're good.
That works.
Okay. May I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you, board.
Thank you all for that. Okay. So I think now we can move into the committee reports, uh, beginning with the finance committee. So I'll add to Joaquin and Bob.
Okay, we have a really tight agenda. Um, so Robert, the the for this last month, we've actually done a little bit better than projected. A little below than two months, but a little bit better than last month. And so Robert will just basically give a quick um summary of that. Okay? Robert?
Thanks, Joaquin. Uh, just knowing we're crunched for time. Um, I believe Gabrielle circulated the finance documents. Um, the key takeaways for this year, uh, this is a soft financial close. Uh, last month, we were projecting about eighty thousand dollars in debt income for the school. Uh, we softly closed the fiscal year twenty books with a hundred and uh one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in projected net income. Um, as we move through the audit, this number will fluctuate a little bit. Uh, we're still due some money from the state, uh, so we anticipate this ticking up a hair over uh two hundred thousand dollars on the year, uh, which is is good news. Um, so considering uh the enrollment shortfall that we had at the beginning of the year, uh, some funding sources like DYCD that did not materialize. Uh, the fact we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars in net income is uh i- is pretty strong uh for our first year of operations. Uh, on an annual basis, just moving over uh to the balance sheet on page two of the financials, uh, we closed the year with about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash on the books and uh two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in accounts receivable or money that is due to the school. Um, that's predominantly grant claims with the State Education Department, uh, which we are finalizing before the deadline of August thirty-first. Uh, so uh, there's no uh bad receivables or any write-offs, I think, uh, that we would be looking at. Our accounts payable balance has decreased dramatically from where we were a year ago. Uh, we closed the year with about fifty-two thousand dollars in AP compared to about four hundred and forty thousand dollars last year uh when we were getting the building ready to open, uh, which is good. And we continue to make payments on our Raza Bridge loan. Uh, we closed the year with about two hun- two hundred and forty thousand dollars uh due to them. Uh, we continue to make about a hundred thousand dollars a month in payments to them. Uh, and we are projected to have that balance zeroed out by September, uh, which is when the bridge loan is due. On the payroll protection program funds that we have, uh, we've received notification from Chase that they anticipate uh, starting to accept applications for forgiveness in uh in August. Uh, we know what the Small Business Administration will require as far as paperwork there. Uh, but individual lending institutions such as Chase uh are still kind of getting their ducks in a row. Uh, so we are waiting to hear from them, but we have everything that we think we'll need packaged and ready to go. Uh, on an equity basis on the balance sheet, um, we closed last year with about sixty-seven thousand dollars in equity. Uh, that has gone up um to about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so we feel good there. Uh, page three of the financials, uh, what is just our statement of cash flows. Uh, there's a lot of ins and outs there, but for the board, um, you know, I think you're looking at the two bottom line figures there. Um, end of the year, we closed the year with twenty-six hundred dollars more than we started with, uh, which again is good. Uh, the last page of the financials are really just the dashboard. Um, again, a pictorial pictorial representation of uh where we landed as far as revenue and expenses go. Um, and then our four operating ratios that we have to report to the State Education Department. Uh, we easily meet three of them. Uh, the one that's in flux is the debt to asset ratio, uh, which again, uh, will go up as we recognize more revenue from the state. Uh, and then there is some good news to go along with that as well, um, just as it relates, I guess, to both last year's budget and this year's budget. Uh, one, we received notification from the State Education Department uh that the school is receiving fifty-six thousand dollars in federal CARES funding um, from the uh first iteration of the federal coronavirus package, uh, which is good. Uh, there's flexibility in what fiscal year we can recognize that revenue. Uh, we didn't budget for it at all in our fiscal year twenty-one budget. Uh, so to make sure we can meet all of our financial ratios, we do have the option to reflect that revenue on the fiscal year twenty books, uh, which is good. Uh, and then secondly, uh, the school was awarded funding uh through FEMA uh for the pandemic. So uh, this will cover FEMA will reimburse us seventy-five cents on the dollar for um all of our PPE costs, uh, masks, Plexiglas, uh, hand sanitizer, gloves, any supplies that we need. Um, so uh, we discussed with the finance committee last evening uh kind of how we can be strategic about that and um having that cushion uh as we gear up for school reopening, whatever it looks like, uh, is certainly nice to have. So um, again, I think uh we closed the year in a pretty strong position. Again, these numbers will fluctuate a little bit as we kind of go through uh the audit process. Uh, but wanted to get you at least some draft figures so you uh know, I think, what you can expect to see um when the audited financials are presented to you uh sometime in September or October.
So I wanted to just add two more points. Thank you, Robert. Um, so this dashboard, which basically reflects um four metrics that are state-based of our performance, will also have two more metrics. Um, and this really has to do with uh meeting the financing requirements of our lender, not our lender, excuse me, our friend's lender, but that is incumbent on us, the school, to meet certain financial metrics. So those two will also, those two additional metrics will show up. They'll be in a slightly different color. Um, the second point on the FEMA, um, there there may be an opportunity to take some of the the aspects, the construction aspects, particularly as related to HVAC and hopefully put together a proposal that we hope FEMA will be able to um, finance at least partially um, under under the understanding that much of this HVAC now has to, shall we say, reach a higher standard of filtration and what have you. So that's one of the strategic things that um that Roberto and DBI and um other consultants will try to work out in short order.
Thank you, Joaquin and Bob both, as always, for your work on this. I know it is gonna man, thank you to David uh for reviewing this with us on the finance committee as well. Is that the end of uh the finance report? Okay. Great, so let's go into, uh, I'd like to go into the executive committee report out now. Okay, great. Um, so I'm going to just quickly review the process that we have here of our annual evaluation for the executive director. Uh, I'm just going to describe the process and the steps. The executive committee is heading this up at this point, uh, Melissa, Joaquin and I. Uh, Joaquin is going to extend uh his time with us unofficially just to conduct the evaluation because he will have been the treasurer during the period of time when Roberto is being evaluated. But Roberto and I uh collaborated on a uh evaluation template that involves uh an assessment by the board and a self-evaluation from Roberto in three major buckets. Uh, it's adapted from a SUNY template that was sent to us by Empire Consulting. Um, it is the school's academic performance, its financial health and its organizational health. Uh, and the process will also involve interviews with Roberto's three direct reports, Michael Delaney and Marv Eda. Um, and we will conduct that over the next couple of weeks. Um, and uh, that's, I'm going to leave it at that high level because any other discussion is going to uh necessarily going into executive session. Uh, Joaquin, do you want to talk about the future?
I know, I realize I was having fun with my mute button. So, given so for those, um, for the benefit of our evolving board membership and recognizing that some of you may not have had the benefit of seeing how the whole LEAP concept evolved over the years, and this is prior to us receiving the charter a year and a half ago. Um, also in view that there is a lot of change going on in the charter school environment. Um, political things that are going on. And furthermore, there was always a desire, two desires. One, that LEAP charter, this particular location, was going to expand beyond fifth grade. And that would obviously require us to meet the metrics as well as apply for an amendment. Um, again, given the political meanderings of the of the charter movement, you know, that may be challenging for for political reasons. And the final, the final important thing to understand is that um, LEAP is a philosophy of education and it is a philosophy of ninety-ten, very much reflecting a cultural, a respect for culture and a a particular pedagogy. So having said that, it was always intended that this would be replicated. Of course, we must ensure that it's replicated on a very firm basis of success here at our own Sunset Park um location. So having said that, I I've asked my fellow um um executive committee committee members and Roberto has has agreed to provide a supplemental statement um that really speaks to where he sees the school being in three to five years. And as I said, that's going to include scenarios as growing the school, right? Having a larger footprint, et cetera, et cetera. Um, this is important because I think we sometimes get lost in the weeds and a leader has to not only focus on what is at hand, but also project into the future and to understand the contingencies that are out there. So I think it is very important and I'm really appreciative of my fellow committee members because this was kind of a last minute discussion to be able to have some time to focus on that and to get Roberto's best thinking and equally important to get really and equally important to get really the the insights of our fellow committee members. Finally, by doing this, it elevates the importance of strategic planning. And sometimes our evaluators only focus on this year and next year. So that is all I have to say. Gabrielle, is that okay? Does that, Melissa, does that reflect our discussions?
It does.
Thank you, Melissa. Roberto?
Thank you, Joaquin. Okay.
Okay.
Roberto, do you want to comment on that, or can we move into the Academic Education Accountability Committee?
I don't know what you're talking about. No, that's very well put, Joaquin, and I I thank you and the committee for really setting the baseline for how we all have a shared responsibility in envisioning uh the short term and the long term. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Okay, so now we'll go into uh the Academic Accountability Committee points of reporting, which will be led by Delinas.
Michael, can you go on to the next slide? Thank you. Um actually, can we start with the slide after that, the overall? Yeah, thank you. So this is actually data that was presented beforehand. I just want to say that this this is not new data. We we talked about this at our last board meeting. What I've added on to here is our ELL subgroup and to see in specific how they are doing and then adding on to just elaborating what are some of our next steps um that we're taking on the academic end to meet some of, to meet our targets. So this information was presented already to all of you. Um we've talked about, oh, you can go back. Overall, yes, no, no problem. We looked at this uh through two metrics. Um how many of our kids met their middle-of-year targets? And we're talking um here about our EDL and DRA reading levels um and what percentage of students met end-of-year targets. Um and so middle-of-year targets, as we see here, DRA English Assessment, seventy-eight percent, Spanish, sixty-four. End-of-year targets, English, thirty-four percent, Spanish, uh forty-one percent. And we discussed previously why we saw these numbers. Um we know that we went into having a robust RTI program um once we had our initial data and we saw those scores start to increase. We could see that through those mid-year targets that we were progressing to getting to where we needed to be. And then unfortunately, COVID happened, um and we had to go into remote learning, which impacted um the amount of instructional hours um and the capacity that our teachers had in terms of the new remote learning approach that we needed to take, which unfortunately stopped us from reaching um the academic goals that we had set in terms of the targets that we wanted to get to. Um in terms of, um Michael, you can go back to the ELL, to the Ls. This was data that I reviewed with the Education and Account and Accountability Meeting at our last meeting in terms of uh how this subgroup of students did with the EDL and DRA. DRA again is the English reading assessment, so this is how they did on their English. What percent of, for what percent of our L students met mid-year targets, seventy-four percent of them did. And by mid-year, we mean by where they were supposed to be by April. And then what percentage of L students met their end-of-year targets, thirty-three percent. Um and then I think we have the EDL information. Yeah, thank you. EDL, the Spanish, um mid-year target, sixty-two percent meant that. End-of-year target, thirty-three percent as well, um met that. So now we can go to the next steps, Michael. So as I just presented a little while ago, we are really, really pushing to reopen with in-person instruction as much as possible. Um we are a dual-language model, as Joaquin mentioned, our ninety, our ninety-ten model. And ninety-ten immersion is difficult, and it's even more difficult to do so in a virtual, remote setting. So it's really in person, important and imperative that, as much as possible, we get to have our kids with us in person. Um we have, as we've been keeping you all informed, we've been really picky about our curriculum next year and what we choose and what we use and what we don't use. And so we've made um some curriculum decisions in shifting to other curriculum, sticking with some. And also our assessments, so even our DRA/EDL, um when working with our teachers and analyzing that data, we didn't feel like we were getting all of the data that we needed from that. So one of the changes that we're doing is that we're moving into a different assessment for our ELA called STEP. That's similar to DRA, but gives us more detailed information into where exactly the gaps are in reading for our students. On the Spanish version, we will continue to do DRA, but we're adding a component called EDL, which is dibbles in Spanish, will give us more information on how kids are doing, um with their phonemic awareness, phonics, skills, which is really important for us to know in order to know where exactly to intervene and where the gap is in their reading. Um we've talked about our summer PD schedule. That's something that myself and the academic team are fully engrossed in right now, getting all of our PD materials ready. We've partnered with TNTP, who is working with us on creating um some professional development around what does quality bilingual dual-language education look like? Um and so that partnership is really just been super helpful so far. Um and they've been a great partner to work with in terms of sharing resources um and working collaboratively. Um we're focusing on what we call the LEAP Way Instructional Framework. We're actually building that framework. It's going to be a living document where we spell out, how does reading instruction look like at LEAP? How does math instruction look at LEAP? Our checklist of what we want to see in each classroom. What are the um language immersion techniques that we use in our class? So that we can really have uh sort of the roadmap for our teachers on what it it looks like uh to have quality instruction in their classroom and be able to hold them to those expectations. Strong hiring, we've been extra picky with who we hire and learning from um our first-year experiences, looking at what are the qualities that we want in our teachers, what type of background and experience. And I feel really confident with the teachers that we've been hiring this team this year. I think they're gonna really add a lot um to our school. We're returning to some of those mid-year priorities, right? We're 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 not forgetting those, especially a focus on systems and routines, which was something that we were in the middle of, sort of resetting and recommitting to prior to COVID just happening, really engaging in deep lesson planning and intellectual preparation. And as I mentioned, um the big piece that we had rolled out um in February, March was um our RTI process and our inter, our RTI coordinator that we had brought in and the RTI program that we had created in our school, um continuing to develop how that will look like in this new world that we're living in with our new schedule, um with the shorter day. But how do we continue to provide that intervention piece that we really saw help our students prior to COVID?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Sorry. Soon you, I will not be asking any more questions.
You always ask me questions.
I would be very interested to know, um in other schools, by anecdote, if you've heard how the performance of students as well compared to their mid-year and their end-of-year uh as a result of this very changed and stressed?
If I've heard of how other schools?
Yeah. Are there students also dropping as precipitously?
I I I haven't expressly spoken with other schools, but I I I know the general feeling is that not, right? There was definitely some academic loss or not as much growth that they would have wished to see if things were as they were normally supposed to be, right? So I think everyone is worried about sort of the widening of that academic gap, that achievement gap, um and a big concern everywhere is the learning loss that is occurring by kids not being in school full-time.
The other two important points to remember is that we left March sixteenth from the building. We were just on the cusp of ready to do our assessment. We were not able to do that assessment. And the heroic work that our teachers did to do the assessments on EDL and DRA were done remotely. And so a lot of that is a challenge uh to get even the data that we do have. The other thing I wanna, I also want to mention is that, you know, we're being very intentional and focused on getting all of our teachers and our instructional leaders high-level professional development. This partnership with TNTP came as a result of a previous relationship with Camino Nuevo in Los Angeles. Kate Sobel was one of the officers there, and she's now a senior partner at TNTP. And you know, we see TNTP as a partnership with us as something that is not just about doing one summer, but rather becoming a long-term partner for the development of professional training that leads to the best dual-language teachers in the country. So Delinas and Doris and Christina are working hand in glove with TNTP because they've not done a LEAP dual-language model training. We have, but what they have done, high-performance charter schools, bilingual educational training. So the marriage of our two organizations is really of great benefit to us. And by the way, their brand isn't bad either. So it's nice to be able to have that relationship as well.
And we're working directly with Kate Sobel, who has so much experience in the dual-language world, leading Camino Nuevo. So um being able to work with her and learn from her expertise as well has been really helpful.
Should we turn to the survey results, Delinas?
Sure.
I know that the board received survey reports as part of the pre-reads. So while I have included your slides from your committee meeting, I don't think you should feel the need to cover every single point.
So uh as you, as in your pre-reads, there were, there are three surveys that we're referencing to here. There's the teacher survey, and surveys were conducted through Panorama, um and you received those reports. We have our teacher survey. We have our staff survey. Staff refers to non-teaching positions, staff in in at the school, and then we have our family survey, um our end-of-the-year family survey. So uh we'll start with our staff survey. Uh you could see here the areas that were assessed or the topics that were covered. So staff-family relationships, staff-leadership relationships, school climate, professional learning, feedback and coaching, and school leadership. And so some of the key takeaways here are next steps, areas of focus for us, something that, and again, this is, so this is non-instructional, not not teachers, so operations, admin. One thing that we heard repeatedly is that they would like more PD opportunities. And so I think a lot of our focus this first year in particular was around providing professional development opportunities for our teachers and our instructional staff. Um and so I think that now an area that we need to think through more is how do we provide also that level of coaching and up and professional development to our non-teaching staff as well. There was a lot, and this is this is, um I think, aligned both in the staff and the teacher survey. It was a big takeaway for us, um was clear communication, communication systems and procedures and protocols. And so we're trying to think through, how can we, for PD, verify what that sort of communication cascade looks like? Who do you go to for what? You know, what are our email guidelines? What time do emails go out? Um how early do we inform staff of changes? Um and so those are all things that we're looking to improve upon, improve upon. We could go to the next. Teacher surveys, assessed similar areas and a few more. Um our teacher surveys, the results, if you are able to have a chance to look over those surveys, our results were pretty strong with our teachers. A lot of them said that, I think it was about ninety or above, strong coaching was in place. They felt really supported and feel, and felt that they were growing professionally. Um strong family-teacher relationships, we scored really high in that area as well. Areas that came out as current areas of concern are areas that we need to look into a little bit more. Um there was a section around just growth, like mindsets. Um and so in reading that, um the leadership team thought, you know, we need to do more work around growth mindset and how do we work with quote-unquote more of our challenging students as the, um as some of the teachers mentioned in their surveys. What is it that we, what are our beliefs around our students and our families? And so those are things that um myself and the instructional leadership team are working to address in our PD time with our teachers and throughout the year, not just during PD. And as I mentioned before, similar to the staff survey, um I think the biggest takeaway was communication, how often it happens, how early communication happens. Teachers really want to know what's coming up um and be told with as much anticipation as possible. Um and I think that they want to feel like they have more of a voice and 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 that their feedback is sought after and considered when making large decisions or important decisions that impact the entire school community.
May I ask you a question about this slide, Delinas?
Sure.
I'm curious what the what the gap is between uh this survey and the family survey. If the teachers feel that they have a strong relationship with those families, but the families seem to feel that they're not involved with the school, is the disconnect in the survey? Or is the disconnect between the way the teachers feel versus the parents feel? But it seems to me there's something missing there. If the teachers feel so positively about it, I'm not sure why the parents are not feeling half as positive.
Take that on, Delinas?
Yeah.
One of the, one of the biggest takeaways from my uh analysis of that data from the parent study that we have big concerns about is that we have so many families from different countries in Latin America that have different systems of education. And those families have an expectation from their home countries that their involvement in the school maybe doesn't need to be as strong. They have an understanding that maybe they need to be able to give their children to the teacher, and the teacher is the authority, and therefore I've done my thing. So our job and our concern is that we begin to break down some of those imported issues, if you will, and really engage our parents and let them know how, what kind of big partners they need to be. To that extent, we created this year a parent commitment letter to communicate directly with our parents what the expectations they should expect from us and what we should expect from them as well. And that that includes everything from getting your child to school on time, to making sure that they're wearing the uniform, to making sure that they have a study space, that they can have time at home to be able to study. Uh so all of those things back and forth, it's not an automatic thing that everybody just gets that built into their, into the the their particular behavior. And so we're, we're through our workshops that we do on a monthly basis, we'll be meeting with parents and helping to do the that information for them.
And I I I do want to clarify, um in our results for our family surveys, our our percentage of, in terms of that segment, our teacher and family relationships, I, we performed well. Um I think the family engagement piece, and I put it up here, um we had asked families, you know, what's the rationale for maybe you not being able to participate as often in some of, um you know, the you know, the events and things that we have, something that we saw consistently come out is conflict with work schedule or having multiple kids at home and siblings and not having a difficult time managing that. I think another topic of conversation as we grow as a school is to what degree do we want to have a parent teacher or a parent, parent organization within LEAP that for this first year was not yet established? But in terms of that interpersonal relationship with teachers and, and the parent, I thought we did pretty well. And in the surveys showed that parents, actually one of the main reasons that they picked or they, they feel that their children are in the right place was for that sense of belonging and care and the attention that they receive from the teachers in regards to their student.
Yeah, I mean, it really may be about how the questions are phrased, right? I mean, the, the, the teachers may feel that they have a great relationship with the parents. But if the question was, you know, are you making X points of contact with the school? And if the answer is two, that's bad. You know, that's not the same as a relationship, right? That's why I'm kind of asking the question, if the disconnect exists purely in the, in the way that the survey works. But it sounds like regardless that there's an aggressive plan to continue to engage families and be doing that sort of stuff. And the teachers feel that they do have good relationships. That's good, right?
I think some of what Roberto had mentioned, some of the things that we're focusing on when it, when there's a topic, there was a sub, a group of just like questions around, you know, responsibilities and who do you see as responsible for, for the learning of your child? And a group of those types of questions. Some of the things there that we saw that we want to address, it's just like things like reading habits, like how often do you read at home? Or how often does your, how often do you read with your child at home? Or how often do you set time apart to do homework? And so obviously we want to promote literacy and a love of literacy. And I think that for me, that was a big area of how do we get families more involved in the learning of their children, even if it's just like, let's sit together and read this story. And how do we communicate the importance and urgency behind that? I, I, you know, I, I'm a Latina and I agree with a lot of the things they said. I'm like, yeah, the school's responsible for the child's learning. I'm like, yes, we are. But what are the behaviors at home that you can do to help support us in that? Not that you're responsible for it, but you know, making sure your child has that quiet twenty minute time to do their homework, you know, sharing a bedtime story. How can we communicate and tell and, and, and form families of the benefits and the importance of having that at home?
I will, I will tell you though, that you picked up on something that's really important to me personally and to all of us professionally at LEAP. You picked up on the, on how the question is asked. And it's not so much a question, an issue in English, it's in Spanish. For those fans, for those folks that pick the Spanish language text, those questions were asked in a very contextually challenging way for a parent. They almost came off accusatory. They weren't intended to be, but it's just the way that they were phrased that it made, and there was nothing we could do about that. I mean, they, they did an okay job at translating the questions. But I think that, and, and we wanted to work with a reputable company to get us the strong data and how these things get done. But I think as we go forward in the future, it's the challenge that we have is a dual language school. Getting, getting high quality materials like a survey tool in Spanish written that's culturally responsive is, is a challenge. And, and you know, we'll, we'll develop that something sometime in the future. But you're, you're absolutely right. It's how it's perceived by the reader.
I would also add that there is a layer that might be helpful that gives a little perspective. Immigrants, I being an immigrant, so you know, there are a lot of challenges that come through in addition to sort of your home culture and different expectations. But there also is just the idea of having to manage your life. And a lot of these homes have multi-generation, so it's not just a kid. There are grandparents, there, there's just so much going on. I think Delly Ness is absolutely right, giving them a few tips, understanding that these small interventions make a big, a big difference in terms of routine. So perhaps if the student surveys had a layer, a preface almost to the survey, then you could weigh, weight their answers and, and their answers become a little more contextualized.
Also, something I noticed, I took the survey and I went through the results just now. Well, a couple of days ago, but I took notes. One of the things that brought down the overall score was on family engagement and there were a lot of questions that just did not apply here.
Yeah.
They asked, have you participated in fundraising? I think everybody's answer was no, because there were a lot of things like on the last Cafe Condu, Cafe Cito, before the closure, we discussed this, we had a lot of plans of all the things for family engagement that would have given parents a lot of opportunities to participate. And then COVID happened. So the, the answer to everybody, a lot of the like, have you participated in the school this way? There weren't enough opportunities to participate. So the answer, that brought down everything. And another little piece that brought things down, I think I, I noticed was communications. And I don't know if everybody's having troubles with class tag, but we certainly are. So that's one little thing that, well, it's not that little, but it would be something simple to fix that could improve a lot of things like in between, like there's no, there's no parent association of any sort or, or, and the ways to participate are limited. So changing those and maybe working on communication would bring everything up. That's just, you know.
And Maho can, I, I'd love to follow up, maybe I don't, I know, I don't want to pick up people's time, but I, I'd like to know what some of those issues by class tag.
Sure, happily.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we're still going with the survey.
Um, I mean, these are just, again, some of the percentages. We talked about these, we can keep moving. In conversation, we've, we've hit upon all of these things. Yep. These are just some of the next steps, which I've already referred to as, as we went through each of them. But clear communication protocols and expectations. Clear coaching and evaluation structures for non-teaching staff. Again, I think a lot of attention has been provided to teaching staff and making sure they have, you know, they know what their evaluation process is, like what they're being held to, what the expectations are, the structure is, how often do you get coaching? The, how does that look like for our non-teaching staff? And I know that that's something that Michael will be working on. More PD opportunities and clear operational systems, right? It's going to be really important for next steps for teachers. More feedback, like taking their feedback. Thinking about like morale boosters, how do, you know, we do just little shows of gratitude toward our staff in a more consistent manner. I think I, I do a lot of that in person, but how do I just like make that more public and acknowledge all of the work of everyone on the team? Clear communication protocols and expectations as well is going to be really important. And just thinking about, again, that stakeholder role, how do we maybe create some subcommittees within our staff so that they can take ownership and feel like they have a say in, you know, like sunshine committee or, you know, things like, you know, what events do we do for school spirit for our kids? I think that teachers really are eager to participate and have a voice in that. And, and we definitely want them to be able to do that.
Thank you, Delly Ness.
No problem.
Great, thank you very much. We actually have a couple of votes here that are related to, ahead, Michael.
No, I was just going back to the, the additional academic items.
Thank you. So we have a couple of votes here that are related to the academic accountability committee's work. We need to take vote on the school's academic calendar that was in your pre reads as well as on the updated family handbook. One quick note on the family handbook, the committee has already taken a look at the updates to last year's family handbook, made a couple of adjustments. Thank you to Melissa and Maho both for their reviews and suggestions. And we're going to for now table the vote on the staff handbook until next month because Little Bird got back to us a bit late with their adjustments. So we want to have a chance to look through that. So for now, we can just go ahead with the two votes for this month. Does anybody have any questions about the academic calendar or the updates to the updated family handbook?
I would just make one note on the calendar as we've pointed out to families in, in our webinars. For this year, planning on using an early dismissal schedule for the first two weeks. It's a practice pretty widely used, give us some additional PD time. I think we've talked about it before, but that's, that's the main shift in this year's academic calendar.
I must have missed this the last time, but there's one noticing. The family conferences, the language mandatory conferences, are you confident that you can actually say that? That they are mandatory, they're strongly suggested, but I don't know if we, I don't know if we can mandate that they attend the conference. So there's something to look into, it's, it's not a big thing, but check that language.
I'll make a note to check that, yes, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, then in that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2020-21 academic calendar. May I have a second?
My second.
You, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. All right. And I'd also like to make a motion to approve the updated family handbook for the 2021 school year. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that Magdalena with the second?
Yes.
Okay. Did I have the right person? I was looking.
Yes, for your minutes. It will not be your minute soon. Okay, great. So now I think we can go ahead into, I'll wait for you to get there, Michael.
All right.
That's okay.
Gabrielle, just, I may have just blurted something, but we did mention that we were going to distribute the staff handbook and then any changes that come from the board, we will reflect those in the upcoming vote. Is that, was that said?
In the upcoming, say it again.
In the, any changes to the staff handbook will be reflected in the upcoming vote of the, of the staff handbook.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Okay, so we have a lot of board related items to get through here. And I, I know that we're already running late, so I want to make sure to get through them as quickly as we can. One first, so we've got some changes coming or arrived, really. I want to take a moment to officially, to acknowledge the official resignations of Ashok Chandra as our secretary and Joaquin Matias, who is in his last meeting right now officially as our board treasurer and the chair of our finance committee. Ashok was kind enough to hang in and wait on his official resignation until we got the Raza loan paperwork done. And he did a big flurry of signatures for us a couple of weeks ago, or maybe three weeks ago at this point. I appreciate, we appreciate all of the effort that he put in to help us get the charter and, and help launch the school. I'll read quickly his official resignation statement since he's not here. It's been a pleasure working with you and trying to build a wonderful organization. Gives his resignation date and then says, I hope to help this wonderful endeavor in any way I can in the future. So that is Ashok's resignation. And then of course, I, with a very heavy heart, received Joaquin's official resignation this afternoon. Via email, Joaquin's been here. I know I gave my goodbye last month, but he has been here from the very beginning, a meeting in Roberto's kitchen essentially, which was really not the very beginning, the very beginning goes back all the way to research that was done around the country that Michael and Roberto did in various planes, trains, automobiles. But in terms of the board's birth, it was at a table in Roberto's house more than two years ago. And he has demonstrated so much legal, financial, real construction based knowledge. I can't even fully phrase the impact that he's had on the school, making it what it is to this day and still helping steer us through this crazy new world that we're in in pandemic times. So thank you very much, Joaquin, for your resignation, for your service. Thank you, and we're sad to see you go. Do you want to say anything before? Or would you like me to read your official resignation language?
Oh, no.
You muted, Joaquin.
You, you don't have to read the resolution language, it's so sad. All goodbyes are sad, but they're really, it's not really a goodbye. And I'll be honest with you, I, I feel blessed and privileged. And I also know that you, you have some great new members or who have just joined and you have a new one that's in the wings. And I think, you know, just keep it real, keep it fresh and keep looking forward because things change very quickly.
Well, I would just like to say, as the person who invited Joaquin to the board and to the organization, and even before that, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. But I want to say thank you from the hearts of little children in our school who are benefiting to this day so much from your generosity. I know that there's about a hundred masks that Joaquin has donated so little kids can wear nice fabric masks in the school. And, and listen, he's, I know he lives just down the street. I know where you live. So this isn't, this isn't goodbye. This is, this is just hiatus. I think it's something that down the road, we have all kinds of opportunities for participation. So we know the good talent that you bring to the organization and we will look forward to seeing you again in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, okay. Now, having got the sad part out of the way, at, at first, we now have the happy and exciting part, which is welcoming two new officers who have been board members, I think maybe since December of last year. David Doak and Charles Som, who are here and have graciously said yes to taking over as our treasurer and finance chair and our secretary respectively. We are really, really excited to have you both as a part of our team moving forward. I'm sure Michael is especially excited to not have to take minutes from now on, Charles, so. So hopefully you can fill those very big shoes on that end. And I, I know it's been a wonderful experience working with both of you so far. And we're, we're very happy that you've decided to stay on and fill these roles. Do you have any comments or anything to share before we do your official votes?
I, you know, I'm sad to see Joaquin go, but I'm, I'm hopeful we can carry this torch along and continue on to great, great things. So I am honored by the opportunity.
Thank you, David.
I am also sad to see Joaquin go and thank you for everything, Joaquin. And those drinks definitely sound good. And I will do my best to keep good minutes. And if I'm elected, I, I serve to the fullest of my abilities.
You have to do the minutes before the drinks, just, just.
And we're still being recorded, people.
Just lemonade.
Exactly. All right, so with that, I would like to make a motion to elect David Doak as LEAP's new treasurer and chair of finance committee.
My second.
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Wonderful. I would also like to make a motion to approve and elect Charles Som as LEAP's new board secretary.
I second.
You can't second anymore, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now we just need to reaffirm the committee shares what we just did that. So we, we can actually skip the finance committee because we just elected David. I would like to make a motion to reaffirm Melissa Jarvis and Yana as the chair of the academic and accountability committee. May I have? Thank you, David. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. And someone has to make a motion for me to be the chair of the executive committee.
I move to have Gabrielle chair the executive committee again this coming year.
My second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Maho, you are the last person remaining with an official title that we have to like reaffirm. So I would like to thank Maho McCorcandale, who has been with us just this past year through maybe the craziest start of the, of a school year that you can have in a new dual-language immersion program that her, her daughter Clara is in. And she has agreed, we had originally designed the parent representative role to just be one per academic year and then have a trade-off between different grades each year, so that different parents got a, a chance to present that perspective and weigh in. But given the upheaval of this current year and the need for some consistency going into the upcoming one, we reached out to see if Maho would be game to do this for the, the upcoming school year as well. She graciously said yes. Maho, do you want to share anything before we vote on you again?
No, just very happy and honored to help LEAP in any way I can and be part of this. It's an honor, really.
Thank you. We are very, very, very lucky to have you. All right, I'd like to then make a motion to reaffirm Maho McCorcandale as our parent representative for the 2020-21 school year. Have a second?
My second.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Now we are moving into approval of the board calendar. If you all haven't had a chance to take a look at those dates, please take a look, they're remaining as the third, where are we now? Third Tuesday of the month? I don't know why I can never quite fully remember that. The one recommended change on here is in February to change that from the 16th to the 23rd, I believe, because the 16th is one of the days where the school is doing staff training for two straight days, and it would be kind of a huge lift for the leadership team to be able to do both the staff training all day and then go into the board meeting at night, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that is fine with me, February 23rd works. Does anybody else have any objections to the dates here?
Not at this time.
Okay, and we'll send out calendar invites for all of them. You won't just have to commit them to memory or anything, but all right then, I would, if there's no other changes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the board calendar for the 2021 school year.
I second the motion.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful, okay. And now the LEAP board affirmation, which will be led by Joaquin, as one of his last acts.
Am I, or, okay. Am I muted or not muted?
You're not muted.
Okay, great. Um. It's kind of the best practice for service organizations to kind, to basically affirm every year what their mission is. I know that there's so much going on, it's hard to keep the long view of things. And so this affirmation statement is kind of a short summation of what LEAP is about conceptually and in practice and the LEAP way. I remember Delly Ness mentioned that a couple, a couple of times. And it's also a great way to sort of check if you've got the essentials right. And also an invitation that if there's anything here that sounds confusing or unclear or ambiguous, feel free to, to talk to your fellow board members and obviously to the board, to the school leadership, Roberto, Michael, Delly Ness, they have been there. This is particularly important because so much has gone on from the time that the charter was written, developed, and passed. And there have been changes in board members, and as in all things, it will be sometime where very few institutional memory will be there. So I would like to see, and this is all up to you now as, as the, as the officiating board members, to have this affirmation be affirmed every year by every board member at the annual meeting. And so if you would give me a few minutes, I will just kind of run it through by you. I know most of this, you know. Michael, can you, can you kindly scroll slowly? So basically, you know, we've got the mission, and it's basically full academic fluency in English and Spanish, meeting the New York standards and developing a cultural understanding and virtuous habits as learners, which is really important. Academic model, it's a specific model. It is a two-way, 90/10 Spanish language immersion. And also the application of the core knowledge curriculum. That's our academic model. Thirdly, we have academic goals. I think that is pretty much established there. And our education program goals, which are very important, these are, these are the foundations of this school and the LEAP way. Dual languages, I've just said, a coherent, content-rich, culturally responsive curriculum that reflects a diverse world cultures, and especially the Latino and indigenous cultures. And in the future, you don't know, with Sunset Park having been an area of a lot of successive immigrant cultures that may change in the future. But at the very least, it is supposed to be reflective of the people who live here. And then what I always love is the character development based on a pedagogy of cariño. And that's really important. People, children often feel unmoored and confused, and knowing that they've got a home outside of home is so important. And then I love the teacher technique and practice development. Delly Ness has worked so hard on this aspect, and it really is a big commitment to do those two-week intense trainings at the end of summer. Is that, and also, we also are talking about developing Spanish instruction models, not mere translations, poorly translated, but actually native language-written curriculums. And finally, we have family engagement, which I know Maho has done a lot of work in, and especially in these difficult times. And finally, we've got what a lot of our board members know about, especially our board chairs, the organizational management oversight and compliance, okay? And that's, and David is, is going to be so amazing in all of this. But it's important to have this institutionalized. So if everybody is fine with this, it would be great to affirm it either by a show of hands. And as you guys see fit, you can actually sign each of these and send it over to your, to your locally elected official. No. Sorry. So if anybody wants to discuss, add, amend, and that's it. I think it would be a really great tool to institutionalize this affirmation. Thank you.
Only change and recommend.
Say it again, Melissa, you burped a little.
Knowledge curriculum, if there's some. The only recommendation I would make would be for the academic model, uphold the application of a core knowledge curriculum because things have changed. Right?
Yes, we, we've made, we've made substitutions in our language and we're calling, we're using the terminology of art of a content-rich curriculum.
Great. So other than that, I verbally affirm it.
Verbally affirm.
Verbally affirm.
I'm not on the board, but I will now verbally affirm.
I verbally affirm.
Thank you, Joaquin.
Thank you, Joaquin.
Okay, and the next item here, for Emily, thank you for hanging in there. This is an extra-long meeting, and we really appreciate you hanging in, but I wanted to take a minute to introduce Emily Fernandez, who is a colleague and, and contact of Melissa's. I was introduced to us a while ago, I believe, probably a year ago, and is sitting here as a prospective board member. She and I have talked, she has talked to Roberto, I think she's on her way to having some conversations with Michael and Delly Ness. And I wanted to give Emily a couple of minutes to introduce herself to us in terms of just background, interest in LEAP, what she does. I'm wondering, Melissa, is there anything that you would like to kind of intro Emily with before she starts?
No, I'm going to listen to what she doesn't say about herself and then fill that in.
Okay, that's fair.
I would, I would like to, I was just, by, by way of introduction, Gabrielle mentioned that Melissa had last year brought Emily forward as someone that needed to be known. And I, we took the opportunity to engage Emily in the conversation. Her life trajectory moved her into a school setting where the gifts and talents that she's bringing to Hebrew can be so helpful to us as well. And we just are pleased with her interest and collaborative spirit to consider us.
Well, thank you. I chose to switch locations as my husband just popped into the living room to take over childcare for a moment. But let me just say hello. Thank you so much for letting me sit in on this session. You know, you thanked me, Gabrielle, for hanging in there, but frankly, like, it's been really, really interesting, and I have such respect for the work of the school team, Delly Ness of leading all of this. It's massive, and to be doing it as a, as an individual school in this time, I just, you know, the plans are very thoughtful. I see you all like accounting for everything, and it's really exciting to look at, so thank you for letting me sit in. I appreciate it. So a little bit about me, I have been in education for 15, 16 years. I taught for a while, was an instructional leader for a while, and then founded the second middle school of Ascend Learning in the same building where Melissa would, a year later, found their high school. So we got to be building partner principals, and I learned a ton from Melissa, thank you. In the past year, last July, I transitioned after five years at, at my school to Hebrew Public, where I am the chief schools officer. And, and develop the academic strategy and coach and support our four school principals that are for managed schools. You know, in terms of why I'm interested, so I have like always been really passionate about school, obviously. That's why I'm still in, in them in one way or another. And, you know, in talking with Melissa about this school in particular, and the vision and the passion about bringing not just language, but identity to the forefront for kids as they're learning in a space, and having that be the reinforcing and consistent factor really excites me. And, and I just, I want to learn more and see how I can partner and support. And what I've talked about with Roberto is mostly, you know, and Gabrielle, I want to make sure that I am able to make the commitment that is right for the board and the school, because I take it really seriously. I know what, what the work of doing a school is. And I want to match that with my own commitment. So this has been really absolutely wonderful. I, I genuinely mean that. I think it's fascinating. And again, I have a huge amount of respect for the work that the team is doing and the seriousness with which you're processing like every question or concern. It's, it's really wonderful to watch.
Thank you so much, Emily. Melissa, what did she miss?
Oh, she's not going to brag that she was an incredible leader, and I'm sure that she's even better now in her role. So it would just be a benefit if, in fact, this is a good match for her because bar none, like, I haven't partnered with such an incredibly thoughtful and intelligent and culturally responsive, responsive and conscientious woman of color, so she's amazing.
Thank you, thank you very much for those ridiculously gracious words, Melissa. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we will check, I will follow up with Emily following this meeting. I'll also circulate her, her resume and materials around to the group. But hopefully, you know, we'll check in and, and perhaps we will be voting on Emily in August, we will see. Wonderful. So going into the next point here, review of board development needs. This is coming out of conversations that I've had with Roberto, Michael and Delly Ness, as well as the various committees, the finance and education committees, taking a look at the upcoming year and what we feel like some of the board needs are. And I think this isn't necessarily a call to action to start recruiting, you know, immediately. We can discuss this as the year progresses, but the three needs that are sort of at the top that we have taken a look at that come out of those, have come out of those discussions are an additional finance expert to help David as he takes over his treasurer and finance chair duties. A dual language, a specific dual-language academic expert that could add their brain power and their understanding of dual-language immersion instructors specifically to the already formidable education brains that we have on the, on the team. Just something that is, I think, specific to that and would also give us, would also, I think, add to just the, the thought leadership that LEAP can present on a local and hopefully eventually national level with respect to dual-language instruction and best practices contained there. And we would also, of course, love to have a fundraising expert. Wouldn't every board love to have somebody who can, can make some money appear rather quickly and easily? So if these are ringing any bells for anybody and you, within your network, know of folks who fall into these categories, please let us know. But again, it's not something that we're sending everybody out to, to do right away, but just kind of have it on your mind as you go through the year. I know that Roberto, Michael and Delly Ness have already been speaking to some folks who are very strong candidates for the dual-language academic expert. David, if at any point you feel like you already know somebody who can fill in on the finance end, of course, would, you know, more than happy to talk to them. But that's, that's basically it. Does anybody have anything additional to add under board roles and development?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then we will go into, done all the votes, done the affirmation. Sorry, I'm just running through my notes here.
Can I, can I just add one thing? Gabrielle, I don't think Gabriella gets enough credit. You really, you really do run a great meeting, and there was particularly a lot of little gyrations to get this put together. So Gabriella, thank you. You're growing wonderfully as a board chair, and keep on that trajectory.
Thank you, Joaquin. I appreciate that. Very, very kind. All right, I know that we have a member of the public, and so I'm just, if the, if the, if our public member is still here, I would love to invite them to share any comments they might have.
And Ms. Woods, this is a wonderful habit that we're developing together. Thank you again for, for joining us. As I said last month, I'm going to hit the allow to talk button, but that doesn't mean you have to make a comment, but we're glad that you're here. Let us know.
Thank you for having me. My son, as I said last month, is an incoming kindergartner, and so it's very important that I'm at these meetings. And I don't really have much to add. Most of what you all shared around reopening was shared with us with some tweaks. So, you know, I'm just looking forward to seeing how the school year unfolds and how I can be an active and involved parent.
Thank you. We look forward to meeting you in person, hopefully soon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I don't believe we have any other members of the public in attendance.
Okay, so that closes out the public comments portion. They, we don't have any need for an executive session at this meeting, so I think that we are very much done with this very long annual meeting. Thank you all very, very, very much for your time and flexibility here and for all the work that you did getting up to this meeting. We'll follow up in the coming months. Just a quick reminder before we go, our next meeting is scheduled for August 18th. So make sure to mark your calendars. We'll follow up with calendar invitations as well. I'll send an email with all of those dates. And I would then like to make a motion to adjourn.
If I may, Gabrielle, before you adjourn, we, and we, we don't do this often enough either. All of you board members are making a significant contribution of time, talent and treasure to the betterment of children, and we just thank you for that. This has been a, a, a year of such change. And I just wanted to note that on behalf of the staff, on behalf of Delly Ness and Michael and Maida and Margarita and the teachers and everybody that makes this school happen on a daily basis, we just want to thank you and let you know that we probably owe you a party at some point. And, and we will, we will show you that, that acknowledgement and recognition. that we probably owe you a party at some point and, and we will, we will show you that, that acknowledgement and recognition. But in lieu of that for now, please accept our muchas gracias y hasta la próxima.
You're welcome, thank you. My second, I think, to end the meeting.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, we'll see you on August 18th. Goodnight.
Goodnight, guys, good to see you.
Goodnight.